James, good to go. All right, we'll call this work session to order, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P M. We're at Oak Ridge City Hall. For the folks in the audience, it's a work session to start with, that it'd be an informal discussion of the various requests and methodologies they use to get there and the recommendations by the committee. And then when we're done with that discussion, we will move into a special session so we can actually make motions to allocate funds. First, order of business is Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, folks. Jackie, would you call the role, please?
Yep, Mayor Cutchen.
Here.
Councillor Charman.
Here.
Councillor Kenyon.
Here.
Councillor Brewer.
Yes.
Councillor Hollitt.
Here.
Councillor Coker.
Here.
Councillor Bjornson.
It's not independent time.
Okay.
All right, item four is just additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda, James. Anything from you? No? Any councillors have a recommended adjustment? Okay. Moving on to item five, business from the city council work session. And first one is ten point nine, or James, do you have any general comments you want to make before we get started on these individual items? Okay. So the first one to discuss is ten point nine, which is the RTMP TRT Committee request to set aside TRT funds for the TRT block grant program. So, James, can you just kind of describe what the block grant program is, please?
Yes, the block grant program is used to unify businesses or homes on Highway fifty eight or in the uptown business district on First Street. Folks can request up to a thousand dollars in matching funds to unify their property and increase tourism. The council is supposed to set aside a certain amount of TRT funds every year. We tried to do that last year. I've just been accepting the application as they come in, including that we don't have any currently frontless. But the committee recommended, they initially recommended setting aside six thousand for the rest of this fiscal year. Then they had another meeting, changed their mind, they decided to set aside two thousand dollars, recommend setting aside two thousand dollars for this current fiscal year. Brought that to council's attention at our last meeting, maybe two meetings ago, I believe. I think wires got crossed or something. I mean, I didn't write correctly, but council made a motion to set aside six thousand TRT funds for next fiscal year. So there are two questions in front of council tonight regarding this issue. The council is comfortable with the six thousand. They have decided to set aside for next fiscal year. Nothing needs to be done, add in. Question still remains, how much TRT fund should be set aside for current fiscal year?
Any discussion or questions on this particular issue? That's okay.
I'm having no idea if we would get any requests. I think we should definitely have something set aside in case we did. In the research that I did, the maximum number of applicants that we got in a single year in the last five years was six. And at five hundred dollars, it used to be the amount they can apply for. That would only be three thousand dollars, but we did, this council did approve to bump that up to a thousand. So six thousand would be what we would probably need at the most for an entire year. Considering three quarters of the time, I do think about two thousand dollars should be set aside for the remainder of this year. This festival. Just going to bring up the same, was that I think that the six thousand should remain for next fiscal and we should put an additional two thousand for this fiscal because of the fact that it's going so fast. Just so we have enough, because I know there's going to be a few people that are coming in that want to unify on fifty eight, which is really needed.
I actually do have one question.
Okay, please.
James, if somebody, if a business were to come to you today, which I think there is one coming to you today, is there money right there now for block grants?
There is right now.
Okay.
But they may not be out there tonight.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
All right, any more on this subject? Okay, moving on.
Someone in the waiting room.
Mayor, I'm not sure how we're going to do this. Maybe it would be appropriate right now to make a motion on that.
Not in our work session.
Oh, that's right.
We're just going to go one right after the other one, once we get to the special session, if that's okay.
Yes, of course.
All right, so we're going to move on to ten point ten, and that's the bus fare, RTMP, and TRT funding requests. Anything to? Other than?
I mean, I can just summarize that. So the bus fare initially, it was listed total of fifteen thousand dollars in either RTB or TRT fee waivers and or free bus service quests. The committee voted unanimously to award, recommend the word two thousand five hundred and R T M P funds, seven thousand five hundred and TRT funds. Thirteen hours of the city's free bus services. Which in total would be worth four fifteen thousand, requested, that's based on bus fare having to incur a cost of five thousand dollars for the bus shows, private bus shows last year, so kind of signing that. Or channels for public services. It works like that. That's our.
Yeah, the the free bus service is new to me. Can you explain a little bit?
Yeah, so it's 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 been in our contract with LTD, or Diamond Express Bus Companies, it's buried in the contract. It's been there for a while. We just never utilize it. It's 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 there, and so we contacted the LTD and they said, yes, that that is a key part of our the deal. To that. Be twenty four hours per year.
Do they just give you a driver and a bus and you can tell over to go? You have a discussion on this, Councillor Kenyon?
Well, I kind of feel like it's it's looking like it might be necessary just to talk about how we want to give you up the hours versus per application.
Yeah, let's run through the ads, just make sure there's no outstanding questions, and then when we get to the bottom, all that, we'll go through the allocations and how that, how we drive and all that. Does that sound all right?
Like to put a pin in the LTD part until the very end?
No, we're just going to kind of go through each of these requests, make sure there's no outstanding questions that councillors have. We get to the bottom, then we'll talk about how the allocation happens and how we want to handle it.
Okay.
Kind of what you're talking about.
Yeah, I I didn't, in other words, I didn't want to look at it for applicants. Maybe the bus part, I think we should look at as a whole section when we get, because there's three entities that are wanting the bus.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
Okay. Please.
It wasn't true. My first work session, Rocker's session. Um, I understand that the the application gives you generalized details. But usually, people in their applications, which you're usually like super diligent about details. What is equipment? You have both amounts under equipment and supplies, but can you give me an example of some of the equipment that you plan to use the the fifteen thousand for that is listed?
Yeah, so like one of one of the biggest expenses as far as equipment goes would be the event tent that we are having bring in because the amount of people we are having for the educational seminars is are exceeding the capacity of the community building that's at Green Waters. So that's the expense by bringing a building, sorry, a tent like that, the insurance company doesn't like something that can blow away the wind, so that increases the the cost for insurance there as well. As far as other equipment goes, I can recall my.
Do you have an idea of what that event tent might cost as a rental?
Yeah, I do. I can find that because they got a quote from them. So that is thirty seven hundred for the tent.
Okay.
Insurance, I can't really give you that because they lumped it all into one. We're still waiting for that insurance quote for this year. And then other equipment, and so I think I should mention is like the way we categorize things within our budget is a little different than how the the applications are.
Yeah.
So I believe that the way I structured that was the equipment would also shuttle would be one of those, which was five grand, and that was kind of with a deal last year. Other equipment would be like our Oak Ridge Channel Hall dumpsters, the porta potties, the hand washing stations, full source trailer. Yeah, I can break that down into a more detail, but I know what I probably need to make.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to get kind of a general idea of what equipment meant. So, yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other discussion? Questions of Rocker, James? Okay.
I just want to mention. I don't necessarily think this is a conflict, but I want to make sure everybody knows that I volunteer for the bus fair the last couple of years, and if Rock needs my help again this year, I'll volunteer again, but I do not receive any compensation.
All right, no, no other questions. We'll move on to ten point one one, which is the Uber TRT funding request. James?
Right, so Uber has requested six thousand two hundred and fifty in TRT funds. The committee voted unanimously to award that whole round.
Okay. Questions of Eugene or James on this?
I was looking for Eugene.
Councillor Kenyon?
Hi, Eugene, I was actually contacted by someone asking me to explain what twenty five hundred dollars for flower baskets meant because in last, that's last year, I think, or the year before, we did about nine hundred and sixty five or something. And and I got to looking at the reimbursements on that, and all of that wasn't even for the baskets. Only a portion of that was baskets and some of those or something else. I don't, I don't remember right now, but can you explain twenty five hundred?
Yeah, no problem. So we have, I'm just, right behind this dead guy here, so you guys can see me a little better. Um, we have older baskets and the ones that we purchased three years ago, their wire basket with like spagnum and they're all rusting and rotting out, so the the whole basket needs to be replaced, and we're looking to replace them with something a little bit better. What we have, what we have, um, Kevin's refrigerator water dam, and it's been like daily, it's dated would be best sometimes every other day. And so we searched tons of other baskets where I still would be both retain the water better, the longer lasting, and then, if I'm saying correctly, the water from ground. One of the challenges that we have is we're, we have to get on, you know, on the comment download, on this fire truck, we cruise around on that water from up above. That's probably my more risky activities that we undertake a bit on here.
How many, how many total five baskets do you guys have every?
Twenty four. There's three of us here from the right to the end of it, so that's why I keep looking at the change. It's actually definitely not all of ours.
Is that more than one basket per pole? Uh, yes, it is.
In most cases, there's two baskets per pole.
So like on your side?
And, yeah, Eugene, those, those only have single side baskets because the monies intercur.
No questions? Um, so it was my understand, so are you buying the plants? Because it was my understanding that there was a greenhouse purchased out of TRT at some point. It was to grow the plants.
Well, we've always said to buy the starch, and we were trying to do this on a choose straight budget, so we bought very little plants and the bond here helps I've moved them to a larger size down at the distillery.
Okay.
It's not really the exact way to go. That greenhouse is very.
Okay, I haven't seen it.
We're looking to buy one or two of ours.
So I'm understanding these are pretty substantial baskets. They're not like what we get at home for our personal houses.
Yeah, they're probably way like bigger. Three pounds, something like that. They're, you know, they're about this big in diameter.
Oh.
So like twenty two inch, something like that.
So I understand the watering from the ground part. Really understand that. My one question would be, have you, if you were to take that part out, would doing something like buying a Rogers basket, the big baskets from Eugene Springfield, you know, I'm talking to Rogers Garden. They're on Main Street. They have all the big baskets in the front. Buying the baskets, they made, they cost like forty or fifty bucks, and they're like the big mondo baskets. I was just curious if you've looked into that as well, but again, it's, I don't think you can water them from the bottom.
Well, yeah, so I mean, that's accepted doing research on it. So companies that are not a sponsor, or or in industry also, their baskets are a lifetime guarantee, so they'll never have to be replaced. They have a side in it so that you can reach it with a wand and some, and they have fingers inside that support the the planting medium, and so that the the roots never crooked into a dry condition. One of the problems that we're having is because that they're not fully draping, is that in between water rooms, they go into root shock. And then when we come to order, we have to do a partial water and let the soil expand and then come back and do, and then we'll just rotate that and force between the baskets. So it's an increase in time that we're not getting the effect that we're looking for.
Yeah. So. Didn't realize they were long term or lifetime basket for that investment. That's wonderful. I was picturing why.
What's the company? Okay.
Yeah, I can just answer your question a little bit more. We have to have baskets that are well enough built and strong enough that you're not ever going to fall off somebody or hang over a stone five bucks here.
Yeah.
Or try to balance the benefit by something inexpensive in my last year, but would need to be completely replaced versus something that the whole work on last.
Yeah.
That's the goal. We've, we haven't had one hundred dollars worth of, and we're asking for fifteen hundred, hundred thousand of their dollars. I'm a little more funding with another product that we don't, you're in the season. She's drinking stuff now and I believe that's.
Councillor Kenyon?
I wanted to hear more about your plans for the billboard.
Yeah. I could speak to that, um, I've been the major person working on that from our board, and just today, we sent our graphics to defender to go forward with that. And our council chairman did the artwork, and we were able to get at no cost, some digital artwork from Chablis County to work with that cooperatively, so we also have to pay for the smaller, where they spread the skin over the board and then tighten it. It doesn't center, so it looks beautiful.
So it is a wrap?
Yes.
And then what about the actual board itself? I thought I read something about updated, like the cover or?
The structure was built two thousand fourteen, I believe.
Does it need any work or was the, did the cover just mean the wrap?
Just the wrap.
Okay.
And we we may have an expense with the solar lighting. We started out with a leopard from being a leopard and decided to go to solar. So we would eliminate that monthly electricity and fighting by in the evening would like some at all, so we'll have to get someone who specializes in solar light to put that, so that's going on.
So that's part of the expenses included here?
No, that's, that's.
Oh.
No, what we're asking for here is just simply.
Okay, and then you might have heard.
Sorry, you want to?
No, go ahead. Start off long for you.
Okay. Um, we had a citizen bring up at that meeting that we had for the TRT, RTMP, that there was a fire contract with the city and Uber. That the sign was going to be random of understanding. There you go. Are you guys aware of that?
It's never written with understanding, it was written when the original billboard was constructed. It is constructed on the rock, Oak Ridge Rock property. The, there was a transfer ownership of the billboard itself, but I understand that there is some sort of maintenance agreement that was put in place at that time that Uber would maintain it.
Has that been being done?
It's not been, it's never been.
I mean, we have gone down there.
It didn't have an expiry date on it, so still important.
Yeah, and honestly, nobody has shown anyone or signed MOU. No one can say there's, there's none of this, but a document that says, this is what you guys raise possible for. This is a conceptual MOU that somebody thinks the sign, but I don't think it's enforceable if you guys find it. That said, we are trying to maintain it before we're asking the funding for, we want to maintain it. But, you know, you could use some city support to do that.
So you, you know that Uber does not have a copy. That's what you're saying?
No, no, we have a copy, but it was handwritten.
Oh, okay. By who? Who, who is it written by?
The former president of Uber, their legislature.
But this is something that the previous city administration actually ratified.
I think it has a city that's.
Have you guys read through the minutes that were provided to us, this conversation? I can read them.
What is it?
These are the minutes in our, on our city's website regarding this topic right here.
We printed them out.
Yeah, Kelly provided them last week.
There's value in hearing them, I suppose you can read them.
So this is where memorandum of the understanding would come into play. They are still working on one, and that's why you don't have one. The memorandum of understanding would basically say that it is the city's sign, but that Uber would maintain it. There's more here. The other piece is that they are asking the city to pay for electricity. Louis recommends saying no to that. He believes a collaboration and cooperation with the savings of seven hundred and fifty dollars a year that Uber would be getting, their three thousand dollar investment would be covered in about four years. We need to ensure that whoever has the lease of the property owner has a lease with sand and gravel because it is not our property, and they are okay with us having the sign on their property. And then there's another motion is Coe moved that the city administrator complete and sign an exemption for governmental unit and enter into an MOU for upkeep and maintenance of the sign with Uber. Councillor Fortune seconded and then it approved.
James, do we have an MOU with Uber? Well, then we don't have anything. You have minutes that's to talk about a future MOU, but that's it, so.
Yeah, but it was in a motion.
This initial. The billboard was powered by electricity from Lame Light. They initially, Uber was paying for the electricity on the get go. Then Uber elected to go with the solar system so that we weren't having a monthly fee for thirty or forty bucks for it. Right now, we have solar license at the moment. It's been on there since twenty fourteen. It currently needs to be going through.
So then Uber doesn't pay for the power for it, its solar generating? I have some more questions.
Please.
Um, so I, I've had a lot of people come to me about this over the years, and I actually mentioned it to Tony several months ago, and Linda brought it up at the Uber group, and I'm definitely in favor of updating the sign. However, I, my personal feelings is that we have a little bit more of a partnership, and that it not only represent Uber, or excuse me, Uptown, but a little bit more of Oak Ridge. I haven't seen the design that's being presented, but I did look at some, and there's a lot of communities that do similar things, and I heard that the wordage was explore Uptown. So, you know, and I thought explore Oak Ridge could be just as useful with a picture of Uptown. And maybe, you know, I've seen multiple billboards where they do like three pictures of their community or two pictures of our community, so I just want to say I am support of a new billboard, but I think it should represent a little bit more of Oak Ridge and not just a specific, I'm going to finish. And so I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
So, it's my fault. So currently, the billboard says explore Uptown. It doesn't, and it has, that is the largest text on there. And it has an parallel that says turn left at the line, and then it has a, a rendering of of basically perspective of the First Street on that income. So the Uber is nowhere on the bill for this exclusive to Uptown.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. I think it should be a little more representative of Oak Ridge and not just.
Well, I guess.
Not just Uptown.
I'm sorry, not just Uptown is what I meant to say. So.
My thought is, is that people are seeing Highway fifty eight businesses as they drive through. The intent of the sign was it's easy to drive through, and we never even know Uptown's there. So the billboard is to direct people. There is more to Oak Ridge, Uptown, so.
And I'm not anti-Uptown. I'm saying that I've seen multiple communities where they have a billboard and they have pictures. And I have an example, but you know, one picture could be, as an example, a row of Uptown buildings. Another picture could be a bicyclist on the side of a mountain. Another picture could be a fly fisherman. It's more than just Uptown. I I totally understand the idea of directing people to Uptown, and I'm not opposed to an arrow or anything. I just think that there could be a little bit more inclusive conversation going on with a billboard. It's being paid by the city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that sounds great. I think what we're working with here is a sign that was put in place to direct people to this specific part of town, and we're the group that's related to this. So we're not directly about that. And probably say it'd be great to have a sign like that, too. That's not our intent of the sign, and I don't think it was the original example of that. It's, it's also out of the scope of what we do.
It's to direct traffic. It's not advertising, and we could put another billboard up, not that one. This is direct traffic into Uptown, just like the three-legged crane has a sign on Highway fifty eight pointing that way. There's no one else on that sign. That's not inclusive, but and this is a private organization, a community organization that owns the sign.
Actually, this is the city owns the sign.
By what?
This.
There's no MOU. There is no MOU.
It's in the motion.
It doesn't matter. No one signed the MOU. We don't have a piece of paper in there.
Nor the bay.
Well, it's okay.
So either side.
I don't think it matters who owns the site.
It's, the point is, it's a partnership is what I'm trying to say, so I think it would behoove Uber to partner with the city, and I I'm just saying, I think that it could represent more. Uber to partner with the city and I I'm just saying I think that it could represent more than just the uptown. That's all I'm saying is I think highway, you know, there's a lot of business.
I mean, it's that's the whole creation of it uptown business. Violation.
It's just my opinion. I think we should include more businesses.
Yeah, if further questions? Any other questions, Miss? Will we go on to the next item? Okay. On to ten point one, two, that's Keg and Cast Festival. Sixty five hundred dollars in RT and P and TRT funding. James, anything to add?
Yes, summarizing, Keg and Cast requested six thousand five hundred in RT and P or TRT. The committee recommended two thousand TRT, one thousand in RT and P.
Okay. Any questions or of James? I don't think Keg and Cast has a rep here, but that's okay. We do mandate it. Questions of him? Okay. We'll move on to ten point one, three, which is the Chamber of Commerce, fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars in RT and P and TRT funding.
Right, so the chamber requesting fifteen thousand eight hundred in RT and P or TRT funds. The committee voted for one to recommend what is allowed by the grid. TRT.
Okay, questions of James? I don't see the chamber here. All right, so we have the chamber president here. If you have any questions of Chamber Commerce request. Okay. Ten point one, four is concerts in the park requesting twelve thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars in RT and P and TRT funds. James?
Right, so concerts in the park, they request committee voted unanimously to recommend awarding one thousand RT and P fund. They tried, they tried to pick three or four motions. Worked some amount of TRT funds, they did not come up with an answer.
They say they could.
Tried different amounts. My perspective is they wanted to work some out, couldn't come up with an amount.
Okay. Questions of James or Renee?
Question, James, what was the amount that was voted down?
I thought it was three thousand and twenty five hundred.
Any other questions, discussion?
Didn't that committee approve some RT and P fund?
Yeah, one of those. All heritage.
Yeah.
What did they? What was the heritage? Event?
Yeah, the committee found that they believe it's a heritage event, you know, for subject to the one thousand dollar cap for RT and P funding.
There's not a likewise cap on TRT.
There's not. And there is an exception to that heritage funding gap.
Maybe apply for special funding because your event can't be done without it. For a large event.
Any other questions? About this, yeah? Next is ten point one, five, which is the Triple Summit Challenge, three thousand dollars in RT and P and TRT.
Right, for Summit Challenge, it splits here. Maybe, sorry, the request for three thousand dollars in RT and P or TRT funding. Committee voted unanimously to recommend one thousand RT and P fund. Thousand five hundred rental fee waivers.
Rental fee waivers.
Yes, basically the committee was just realizing that rent low on funds. A way to help out was to use rental fee waivers.
Isn't that in your purview?
It is for charities, organizations, and that's only up to one thousand dollars.
Understand, any questions or discussion here on the Triple Summit Challenge? Okay. Ten point one, six is the Sasquatch Festival. Thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-five RT and P and TRT funding and free bus service for eleven hours. Yep. James?
Yes, so correct that is the request, the committee voting unanimously to recommend seven thousand five hundred dollars in TRT funds. Plus three thousand dollars worth of part rental fee waivers. And if you start eleven hours, the remaining eleven hours of city street LT sponsors. Our good is mentioned earlier that conflict. But this another group after this recommendation was made, took a request of six hours.
Okay.
So I I believe that I and also transvestite. So if somebody else needs the bus.
And there may be some up over here.
Any questions of James or Priscilla on this event?
Was I'm gonna check something really quick. Is this application for TRT or for RT?
I just also wanted to state that I'm also volunteering part of the Sasquatch and not being compensated in any way.
So was there a recommendation for RT and P?
Uh, no. But it isn't still an option for council.
The the application says RT and P.
Maybe the committee steered away from RT and P. Is that what happened?
Yes, correct.
And instead went after the fee waivers so they could allocate more RT and P elsewhere. Yeah.
But I think
Counselor Holland, do you have a question? We're here. So, yeah.
I also found this afterwards. I went to purchase two of these tents and then donate them to the city. So they can use them for festivals, replays, whatever. You know, any city event, but they're twenty by by forty or nineteen point five by thirty nine feet, they're eighty hundred dollars each, but.
That was built into your your request?
Yeah.
Okay. That's great. Yeah, thank you. All right. Next change is ten point one, seven. This is feast request to use six hours of city free bus service.
Yes, so the feast is requesting to use six hours of twenty-four hours free bus service for their events. If they but the way they're gonna do it is they're gonna if they're ran those hours, they're gonna put out a questionnaire or whatever, the post, you know, ask you to do the event. Asking if they need transportation. If nobody has a needed transportation, then that's all bus service and hours.
Is it on? Is is the contract with LGD on calendar year?
I'm guessing.
I think it probably is, but yeah. All right, so, Captain Kenny, please.
The feast is just one of that, all right? It's not a ongoing thing.
Right, yeah.
And my other question would be, did you get any other requests for the bus recently? I know it did come up in a TV discussion online that maybe they could utilize a bus to go to the county commissioner hearing that's coming up. I didn't know if anyone contacted you.
All right. That's all the the official events, but I know that Counselor Kennedy, want to discuss the bus now, the bus allocation? Is that kind of where you want to go with this?
Sure, I mean, I wanted to talk about obviously, nobody really knew about this bus being available. But it seems like once the word got out, it really spread far. And there may, all I'm saying is we better look at the possibility that more people could utilize that in other ways. So, I mean, I'm torn. I'd like to just be able to say all these events can give you up the hours. But I also feel like maybe we should be looking at setting some aside for what ifs. As an option.
I can't remember the dates, but between feast and the Sasquatch Festival, do you know which one happens first?
Feast, feast, it's in May and then Sasquatch is in July.
But the bus fair is in between.
Yeah, well, I was pointing out, I was gonna point out the feast, it sounds like they might know pretty quickly. They're gonna use it. So that there may be hours regardless and then she has ability to
As I can say, it sounds like Sasquatch Festival may not need the buses.
Yeah, that's I'm like, maybe six plus what by eleven hours. One still potentially.
Sounds like it's one, so then we then we find the same brush.
Also, but yeah, is it robust thing? Is it, yeah, I find out this year or?
I'm guessing it's county or like one year.
Well, that'd make a lot of difference if it was, if they had the same fiscal year as we did, then you'd have a whole year twenty-four hours, but anyway, this that kind of get your mind kind of what the thought is, so we can make a motion when we get to a special session about how we like to allocate. Any other general questions on the apportionment of these funds, these events?
What's our starting number for before we award?
I don't know. As you see, the estimates for our RT and P fund balance it'd be as low as eighteen thousand eight hundred sixty-nine, which those are the amounts in our recent financial points. However, I I think that number is very low. We just received thirty-one thousand three hundred sixty-nine in the end of two thousand twenty-three. Only RT and P funding gets improved since then, two thousand five hundred. This golf tournament. So our RT and P starting balance would be anywhere from eighteen thousand eight hundred sixty-nine to twenty-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-nine.
They took primarily a conservative approach and not.
They used twenty-five thousand dollars.
And what would you, what do you feel comfortable for saying that TRT has? Before we award.
TRT, same same deal. TRT balances range from anywhere between twenty-five thousand dollars to thirty-four thousand two dollars a cent. Based on previous verbal amounts writing to me compared to what's in our most recent.
Is there a separate bank account for each of these these two lots of money?
No, no, no. Well, there was one set up, but it hasn't been used because all general fund has always been. Then if they're own cash accounts, fifty years, that we
Yep.
Have that to the long.
Counselor Kenny?
We did have at one time, so for the bank, Banner Bank, last year around beginning of the year. I thought I was told that the two or one, one or two separate funds at Banner Bank got closed and moved into the main account.
That was an account we discovered that was for ambulance or something like that.
The ambulance fund?
Ambulance was separate. There was a TRT, RT and P one.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the account we found, but we didn't know about.
No, this was prior to that. It was shortly after Colleen came on board, eighty-six to ten months.
There's still a very big account, but anyway. That was set up at one time for a partisan, these are two, and the other three and all, and then there's a sit there. Because if we use that separately, that's everything has to be fully done, balanced completely separate, so. When I set up these accounts aren't this one year, I just gave them their own cash account, just like everybody else in the general.
It also doesn't accrue like it does in the LGF.
I assume that would even solve the issue because sometimes money is allocated but not extends anyway, so.
Right, so if anytime anything is written out for TRT or RT and P, it does hit that actual cash account to do exactly what has or hasn't been charged to it.
Um, the the RT and P TRT accounts as they're being tracked. Um, since a lot of these requests are, you know, leaning towards the reimbursement side, is there a part of that accounting that keeps track of how much was allocated for the bus fare, for instance, and then how much is being paid out now? Is there a way that we can figure out how to keep track of it better so we don't have overpayments? Or allocate.
So we started Jack essentially does the minutes from does all the stuff. She is started a spreadsheet so that when you guys approve of something for your X, Y, Z, we'll be sure we can stretch you. That will be going forward for you guys for with the financial reports or whatever else.
I don't know if this is the right place to talk about it or not, but I do, I do see that we have some issues in the financials with the RT and P and TRT accounts that I think need to be fixed in order to help the actual available balance of both banks. Due to some errors in the account.
Yeah, it sounded like maybe a resolution ordinance that's originated by the TRT, RT and P committee and adopted by council with the with the restraint, the the controls you need on to prevent it from happening.
Um, well, prevention, I think is a separate issue moving forward. I'm talking about there's a, there's over twenty thousand dollars that's been moved out of the RT and P fund in the last five years that should not have been. It's it's been moved out and put into other city funds and it needs to go back.
It's a lot of work for five thousand dollars.
Twenty, twenty thousand.
Still a lot of work for twenty thousand dollars in five years, but it's if council wants to make that, right, probably this isn't the form to do it, but maybe agenda item that we can queue up for James to get on a future agenda.
I don't remember, sorry.
Yes, let's not talk about it now. We have a lot to do here.
It would require a lot of work, we talked about going back to audit and everything.
Yeah. Yep.
It only took me about four or five hours to figure it out, so I would think it would take about that much to fix it.
Well, just hand what you have to Colleen, and maybe we can just make the transfer. All right, um, any other discussion on the general allocation of these funds? I have a couple. Um, one was to Renee, so looking at the amount that's been recommended, are you even going to be able to conduct concerts in the park if you have two thousand or three thousand dollars coming from the city? It just canceled?
No.
Okay.
When you have to expend a hundred bucks, three thousand five hundred dollars. That's just, and when you were talking about this special box that you could check for R T and P, I guess we didn't know that. Well, it's supposed to check, but yeah, but yeah, this for free shows, so just so you know, it's not a one-time event, you have one month and three bands for each one. So it is, you know, a pricey thing to for the city, but it is free for everyone in the community. And vendors from the community can also be there for free, so it's really city history thing that we're bringing forward and wanting to continue. And, you know, we do look for private funds as well. It's been more difficult in the last couple of years than it was before, and our student businesses being able to be so under donations, but that's, that's what we see, and so what we're asking for really is something that kind of says, maybe you free show. If it's slower, then we'll probably, again, they keep paying more support. But, yeah, we can, we can go forward unless we.
And you do, you did get donations last year, if I remember correctly, but.
We did, we did, but the total donations really, you know, from like the business with about a thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I just, I just wanted to say that in the application, what we were trying to do is bring awareness to those people who rather exactly how much it costs to put on the show this. You know, it's, it gets interpreted as the ads, but in reality, we're, we're laying our heads on the block and, and we're putting ourselves at your discretion. We just want you to have an awareness of how much it costs to put on the concert. And, and in the letter to that with our request, it noted that we did an analysis of the funds, that the money that the constituent part committee itself spent locally and compared that against the amount of money that we've been awarded since twenty nineteen, and it comes out the roughly, every dollar that we've gotten from T R T or R T and P created a dollar fifty to local businesses. That, that, that doesn't take into account what the, what the people who come or this patient people are spending. Um, that does, that is strictly average money, so anything that pays, anything that pays, anything, any expense we have outside of citizens is not taken into account.
Thank you. And James, the other question I have is, as I looked at these recommend, the committee's recommendations, a little more into the methodology, because there, there are some requests that were pretty much funded almost to a hundred percent of the ask, and there were some that were funded much, much less than they asked. You know, in previous years, I know that we've kind of looked at that as a, maybe a consideration, but it didn't appear that that happened this year.
I mean, a lot of the folks on the community plus they met for six point five hours, I believe, four point five, it's great, you know, you didn't see what it was about the rates, none. So. I'm in the place. This would see.
I think also that because it was, um, uh, some of the, two of the big events were at the first meeting and maybe one smaller than, and then all the rest of the events came to the, I said, the next meeting. So I'm, I'm guessing that it was just overwhelming, the one thing.
Yeah.
And there, and there are more additional requests.
For this money, this year's money or?
There'll probably even be more, I don't know how many you have, but based on the research that we did, we looked at all people who have been coming over the years. How consistently they've been asking, and there's, um, there's still, I don't know, five, four or five that I think will be coming. How many have you received?
One, one in paper form and another one moves.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion, more discussion? I think we're ready to go into a special session, go for some motions.
Are we going to allow for public comment in special session?
There's a public comment in the beginning of a special session.
That's what I was asking, because we've got one in back. It'll be just a minute.
Yeah. James, anything else?
I just, I got a request, sound maybe off, but maybe on there and Jackie, can you hear us? Okay.
Yes, I can hear you guys.
All right, so what we'll do now is during the work session, and anyone need a break before we move in? Okay. Anyone warm here?
Mayor, how much time might we take? Is this, is this?
Soon as they're back, they'll just be a couple of minutes.
You guys do that.
That will do it right here.
I already found it.
Oh, we'll get it back. I shot myself. Okay, you guys could, you know, how many? Yeah.
So it's just. Oh, no.
Well, we walked around, I was like, but it wasn't like they were rolling, you know?
Yeah.
But it was, I have more than.
Yeah.
Chinese students right here. And he was trying to push. I know. Those ones are trying to grab it, but it's. The action's supposed to go straight up. Yeah.
James, you ready to go?
Yes.
Colleen, are we still recording? Okay. All right. It's all this special session of the city council to order. It's still March twenty-seventh, and it's seven thirty P M. I think we have to go through roll call again, please, Jackie. Well. See if we'll catch up.
Yes.
Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Yeah. Um, Mayor Ketchum?
Here.
Councillor Charman?
Here.
Councillor Kenyon?
Yeah.
Councillor Brewer?
Here.
Councillor Hollitt?
Here.
Councillor Coker? Councillor Bjornson?
Not in a ten state.
Okay.
Did we get councillor Coker? I see her up there.
Um, she didn't say, I didn't hear her.
Uh, okay.
If she did.
All right.
She might have stepped away.
And next is additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda, James? Yeah, councillors, any recommendations? All right, moving on to public comments, so we'll start in the room, public comment in the room.
Yeah. Uh, so I just wanted to follow up a few things that might be helpful for council. Uh, first of all, this is a great problem to have, with so many awesome things going down, and we have only a little bit of money.
I don't think it's.
How do I make this happen? I know it's not great for you guys. Um, but I wanted to touch on the bus service thing, just so you guys know from an event planning standpoint, so you kind of understand they should make a decision for this. Um, so when you were talking about splitting the hours, um, there's a potential issue with that, and that's just because of what I've learned with, um, getting charter services to provide, um, a service, so like, say, example, if you want to split it, and then we gave an event half the hours they needed for that day, they're still gonna have to hire a private charter service, and that private, private charter service usually charges per event or, um, per day, so they're still gonna have to pay the full rate, so that's not actually gonna help an event out with something at a full amount. It also depends on the type of service they need. They, they might be able to get away with a service like Transgast Stadium or Cogwild, and that's what we used, um, in the very first year of the bus fair, but Eugene could assess that he had to jump in his home personal minivan to start shuttling people because the amount of shuttle vans are not big enough when you start to get a certain volume of people, so just keep that in mind as you're making your decision for splitting hours, that if you split an hour and try to give an event only half the day of shuttle service, it's not really doing them a favor. They're still gonna have to pay that full fee for the shuttle company to come in and pick up the rest of that day. So, and then Mayor, I wanted to, uh, go back on your problem made last year, but in regards to our, our, uh, requested funds and parking waivers, I do agree with you that parking waivers should be something that we try to eliminate as much as possible. And that's why within my application, I wanted to utilize the funds that I'm asking for to go right back into our parks, so investing back into our community. Um, and then the last thing I just want to say, you know, the bus fare is a small business here in town. Uh, we're designed a little different than most businesses. We're here to actually try to help other businesses in town. And our economic, uh, impact report that we provided you shows that, you know, we were able to bring in over forty thousand dollars into town. Um, and then, uh, do you want me to follow up? I had a few other things that I found within the budgets, or do you want me to weigh in on my agenda item for that, sort of, for my units?
Are you mean as far as the equipment part?
Yeah, do you want me to touch on that now, or do you want me to wait?
So just, you, I answered, you answered my question.
Okay. All right, well, that's it. That's all I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, see, is there any public comment on the Zoom platform? We'll come back one more time, and anyone in the room, Eugene, please.
Hey, uh, I just wanted to make a brief comment to y'all. I, we know that you guys have a dilemma trying to figure this out. We really appreciate you all taking the time to try to get more information, make the best decision, and, um, you know, speak on behalf of the red. And play that whatever you can award to us, we're gonna put into action. I really appreciate that the committee recommended the full amount that you requested. I think that if we receive that amount, we'll be impressed with the results. Um, but whatever amount is awarded to us, um, I hope that you feel like it's a good value.
Thank you. More, uh, we got one in the waiting room.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, just, and FYI, Michelle was on, but we weren't able to hear her.
I think she just rejoined.
To log off and log back on, so, but she has been here.
Okay, and she's coming back in now, so that's good.
Okay.
We'll try the Zoom platform one more time. Any, any public comment on the Zoom platform? Nothing heard anymore in the room? Right, please. You can.
Anyway, I just wanted, that, that was kind of the same thing, is that within the money, we did include park fees instead of asking for those to be waived, so that's an amount that we're looking at too, so that's fifteen hundred dollars for park fees for pre-day events. So that is another significant consideration.
Thank you.
And this, we've been around for a long time. It is sort of a very big tradition that's been in the community. It's really important, but we would really like this to continue and be a part of our, our community event. It's something that's free for everyone, so it does expand out into a whole community and bring people together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more time on the Zoom platform for public comment. One more time in the room. Okay, we'll move on. Um, next is business from the city council. Ten point nine, which is R T and P T R T committee request to set aside T R T funds for the T R T block grant program. Um, so is there a motion to be made here? Councillor Kenyon?
I'd like to move that we set aside two thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for block grants. A second. Out of the T R T fund. How much is that? Two thousand.
All right, a motion was made by councillor Kenyon and seconded by councillor Brewer. Any discussion on this? Questions? All right, the motion was to set aside two thousand, uh, in T R T funds for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, T R T block grant program. Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Hollitt?
Hi.
Councillor Charman?
Aye.
Councillor Coker?
Aye.
Councillor Brewer?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Uh, moving on to ten point one zero. That's, uh, the bus fare, R T and P and T R T funding request. Is there a motion to be made here? And?
I moved to grant three thousand eight hundred fifty dollars in park fee waivers to be reimbursed by T R T and three thousand eight hundred fifty dollars in park fee waivers to be reimbursed to the Parks Department, as well as thirteen hours of L T V bus service to the bus fair.
Yeah, did you get that, Jackie?
Um, if she could repeat it one more time, or somebody.
Um, if she could repeat it one more time or somebody, I got part of it.
Okay, I moved to grant thirty-eight fifty in park fee waivers to be reimbursed by TRT to the Parks Department and thirty-eight fifty in park fee waivers to be reimbursed to the Parks Department with R M T P or R T M P as well as thirteen hours in L T D bus service to the bus fair.
Okay, um, Counselor Brewer, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this motion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Please, go ahead, Counselor Coker.
Is there gonna be thirteen hours of um L T D bus service available for that and not interfere with others that have asked to use L T D bus service?
Yeah, I think it was while you dropped, we had a short discussion and it should be enough to uh accommodate uh the two units, uh two events that need it and um Priscilla has gotten some additional help from Cogwild and uh Trans Cascadia.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kenyon?
Uh, my question would be for Brock. Is it, is thirteen hours a good amount that would help you like take care of a full day so you don't have to rent that day any extra?
Yes, it will actually take care of two days. So Friday, we have an educational seminar where we have up to two hundred fifty people coming in. They need a ride in the morning to get to Green Waters and then a ride back to their cars in the evening. And then it'll cover eleven hours on Saturday, which is our main day, hopefully the public.
Bringing people in.
Just constantly running, yeah, the entire day from eleven all the way till nine thirty.
Excellent.
Yeah.
You have a question?
So thirty-eight hundred dollars in park fee waivers.
Thirty-five, fifty on both.
And thirty, the total park fees for the bus fare I saw in his um application was seventy-seven hundred. So I just broke it into, yeah, to equally disperse. And then that with the savings of the L T D bus service. That's the decent amount.
Okay.
James, is there any issue there the way that's worded?
No, um. I, I, I understand.
Oh, no, I'm just thinking, you, the other alternative is you, you, you give the bus fare thirty, thirty-eight fifty, thirty-eight fifty, and they just pay the city, but it doesn't matter? No, okay.
Yeah.
Either way.
Okay. Any others? All right, uh the uh motion was to uh give the bus fare three thousand eight hundred fifty dollars in park fee waivers to be reimbursed by RTMP and three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars in park fee waivers to be reimbursed by uh P R T. I got that? Okay. All right, um, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Did you leave out the part for the bus?
Oh, and the thirteen hours of L T D bus service. Jackie?
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Brock.
Uh, we are on to ten point one one, and that's Ubera's uh six thousand two hundred fifty dollar TRT funding requests. Any more, James? No? Okay. But here a motion on this event for this request.
Uh, I moved to grant six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in TRT funds.
Okay, do we hear a second? All right, I'll second that. Discussion? Questions?
Can you repeat the motion again? Six thousand two hundred fifty, five, what?
TRT funds.
Exactly.
It, yeah, as recommended.
Sorry, I don't have that pulled up.
Any further questions or discussion on this? Okay, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please? The motion was to grant uh six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in TRT funds to Ubera.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Nay.
Counselor Brewer.
Nay.
Counselor Kenyon.
Nay.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Nay.
Okay.
All right, motion fails. Are there any other motions on this request? Please.
I moved to grant Ubera thirty-five hundred dollars in TRT funds by reimbursement.
I'll second that.
Yep.
Thirty, oh, they're not? I'm sorry, I apologize then.
Well, I think that's why you're adding.
Yes, okay, yeah, by reimbursement. That's just what I was.
I don't understand.
So RTMP funds are on reimbursement?
Yeah.
You have to show us the receipt. TRT funds technically are not.
Yeah.
They can be paid in advance.
Okay. All right, um, is there a second on that?
I'll say that. Thirty-five hundred T M P by reimbursement.
Okay.
Um, how much was that? I'm sorry.
Three thousand five hundred in TRT, Jackie.
Okay.
Discussions or questions?
I'm right to the fact that RTMP is by reimbursement, so I thought maybe it might be something we can go forward with to help with spending, maybe.
Interesting. Do it from RTMP then.
I, I literally, the reimbursement part was, was just an added as something that we could use across.
More appropriate, RTMP is more for events.
And with what Eugene has planned, if he has enough capital, it shouldn't be a problem, I wouldn't think.
That's what I figured.
Yeah.
Any more questions or discussion on this?
Um, Kelly, in your motion, are you um, in your head, are you thinking that um so since we're not granting the full um ask in your motion is um
I was looking at the baskets, the signage, the town cleanup, the marketing banners, and the billboards refresh. If I'm not mistaken, that was more or less than that. It was like thirty-eight fifty total.
So which one, was there something crossed off in here that you didn't feel?
Yeah, the streetlight banners. It was a little shy of the full four or five things together. That was like thirty-eight fifty, I think.
Okay.
So I chose maybe five.
So then essentially, would we would be grant, in your motion, we would be granting everything except for the streetlight banners?
Or however they want to to spend that money on, if they wanted, for instance, to do the streetlight banners, but they only have a thousand dollars towards it. You know, so it wasn't necessarily per item specifically, it was more like just a general um overlay of funds to disperse as they see themselves with.
I would, I would think once the money's granted, as long as the items are on the list they initially submitted, there should be, we shouldn't get involved in that micromanagement.
I'm not micromanaging it. I'm asking because I, I agree with her thought process. I just um I was thinking in the future, they could come before us another time and ask, uh, maybe, you know, show us the banners and maybe have a different proposal for the br- banners. Um, but right now, we're not granting the banners, so that's what I was getting out of asking her is that it could be another ask. Yeah, like with a picture, hey, this is what we want to do, and so we have a better idea. So I would agree with Kelly's motion.
Any other questions, comments on this? All right, the motion was motion was to grant three thousand five hundred dollars in TRT funds to Ubera on a reimbursable basis. It worked for you. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes, Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. On to ten point one two, that's the Keg and Cast Festival RTMP TRT funding request for six thousand five hundred dollars uh RTMP and TRT. James, anything to add before we? Okay. All right, is there a motion to be made here?
I moved to grant one thousand dollars from the RTMP funds for the Keg and Cast Festival. I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Brewer. And any discussion, questions, comments on this?
Yeah, um
in case anybody forgot, there is a motion on the table that we made last year um regarding this event, and it was Counselor Kenyon moved that she approved two thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety cents in RTM funds to the two thousand and twenty-three Keg and Cast Festival with no more than one thousand in funds moving forward, and that motion did pass last year.
So translated, that means they already have money in the bank for this.
No, it means last year we voted that moving forward, they would go into the heritage slot of only receiving a thousand dollars, because I think their event's been going on for sixteen years.
In RTMP, right, Jackie?
Correct.
And they're asking for two thousand in TRT?
Yeah, well, technically, it's selfless.
Right, right, but the recommendation was um, so I, I don't know why we're shortchanging this particular event um and not giving them at least what the committee asked for, which is the citizens' input into city council, but that's my discussion. Anyone else?
I just want to mention that I did, that's like, as when we're, a second motion would be made after this one. As far as.
Yep, yep. All right, any other discussion? So the motion was to grant one thousand dollars in RTMP funds to the Keg and Cast Festival. Jack, could you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Any other motions to be made on this? Event?
There are many motion. I moved the grand two thousand dollars in TRT funds to the Keg and Cast Festival.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Charman, seconded by Counselor Brewer. Discussion, comments? Questions? All right, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Brewer.
Sorry.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Nay.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Nay.
All right, motion passes. Uh, moving on to ten point one three, and that's uh Chamber of Commerce, fifteen thousand eight hundred dollar RTMP TRT funding request. Uh, thanks, anything more on this?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, do I, your motion to be made here?
I moved to grant twenty-five hundred dollars in RTMP funds by reimbursement to the Chamber of Commerce.
Already reimbursed for it? Thanks.
Okay, I, I just wanted make sure that that was like you, what you intended to not follow the convenience of our recommendation.
Yes.
And aren't, is an RTMP already a reimbursable fund?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so, motion made by Counselor Brewer, is there a second on that? Or actually, Counselor Coker, you seconded it, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Discussion, questions? Counselor Kenyon, anything?
Sorry, there was something in front of me. I was, I'm really sorry.
All right, no questions. Uh, Jackie, would you call for a vote? The motion was to grant two thousand five hundred dollars in RTMP funds to the Chamber of Commerce.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi. Motion passes. Any other motions to be made here? Okay. On to ten point one four. Uh, that's Concerts in the Park, uh, request for twelve thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars in RTMP and TRT funding. Um, James, more to add on Concerts in the Park?
Okay.
Is there a motion to be made here? Please.
To grant one.
Sorry, I did have one to get. I'm sorry, I was just going to say that as we have so little money, sometimes it might be appropriate to use some our fee waivers. I just want to remind you that's option for events.
Um, did we, did we, are we in discussion? No.
No, we need a motion.
If you started one when you, you know.
I have one quick question. How much is a park fee for one event?
Uh, for them, it's five hundred dollars per event because they don't rent the entire park. They just rent the amphitheater, so for their three events total, fifteen hundred.
Okay, but don't they need the other side for parking? Isn't parking a part of the concerts and parks?
Uh, parking is open to the public, so.
But.
We worked on the O I P, but I don't think they use that, do they? They use the field next to the amphitheater.
So you guys, your concert goers don't use the park side for parking?
They use the field that.
Right next to the amphitheater.
That's between.
Okay.
The um, try.
Gotcha, thank you.
Uh, okay, my motion is to award uh fifteen hundred dollars in RTMP funds to the concerts in the park. I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Brewer. Discussion, questions? Comments? Um, I, I would just say, if you value the event and, and the service it provides to the community, this is not gonna cut it. It's, you might as well just make it zero. I don't, because they, they're not gonna be able to pull it off, but if that's the way you feel about concerts in the park, and that's it, I understand. So, um, like, I'm a supporter, but uh, I know that they won't be able to pull it off with fifteen hundred dollars. Particularly given they asked for twelve thousand three hundred and fifteen. Any other discussion?
I'm sure, and for discussion, I'll point out that in the research that I've done in the past, they've never been awarded more than three thousand dollars in the last five years, so it's oddly how they wouldn't be able to afford putting on one show with fifteen hundred dollars and earning some money and then putting on some more shows. That'd be my, that'd be my.
Any other discussion? All right, the motion, uh, was to grant. One thousand five hundred dollars in RTMP funds. To concerts in the park. Get that right, Councillor Kenyon? Okay. Jackie, uh, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchin.
Hi.
Councillor Hollitt.
Hi.
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Any other additional motions here? Well, I'll move to grant, uh, one thousand five hundred dollars of TRT funds to concerts in the park.
Second.
Yeah, discussion?
Mayor, how much was that again?
One thousand five hundred dollars in TRT, Jackie.
Thank you.
All right, um, there are no discussion. Uh, would you call for the vote, please, Jackie?
Yes. Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Councillor Hollitt.
Hi.
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchin.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Onto ten point one five. And that's, uh, Triple Summit Challenge, three thousand dollar request in RTMP and TRT funds. Uh. James, anything on this one?
Uh, nothing to add.
Yeah, is there a motion to be made here? Okay.
I moved to grant one thousand dollars for RTMP funds and fifteen hundred dollars in fee waivers to the Triple Summit Challenge.
I'll second that.
Hey, motion made by Councillor Tarman and seconded by Councillor Brewer, that was fifteen hundred in TRT, was that what you said?
One, one thousand in RTMP.
RTMP, okay.
Fifteen hundred in fee waivers.
Okay. You got that, Jackie?
Question.
Yeah.
Are the fee waivers to come out of TRT, or is it just a flat waiver that you're motioning?
Uh, well.
James?
I was just, I was gonna say.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
I always do a much recommended motion from the maybe.
You know what the intent of the committee was, James?
The intent of the committee was for a fee waiver, not.
Not a transfer of funds to cover the fee waiver? Is that okay with you in your motion?
Uh. Let's say fifteen hundred fee waivers to be reimbursed by RT.
Okay, um, is that okay with you, the second?
Yes, absolutely.
Discussion. Questions?
The reason that I brought it up is, I think, um, the dilapidation of our amphitheaters should, um. We need to consider that. That's why I brought it up, because, um, there's more work to be put into it, so that money has to come from someone. That's why I brought it up.
All right, uh. The motion was to grant the Triple Summit Challenge. One thousand five hundred dollars in RTMP funds. And one thousand five hundred dollars in fee waivers to be reimbursed. With, by TRT.
Wait, that's interesting. Only one thousand for RT.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sorry.
One thousand and fifty.
Okay, one thousand dollars in RTMP funds and one thousand five hundred dollars in fee waivers be reimbursed by TRT. Thank you. Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Hollitt.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchin.
Hi. Motion passes. Any more motions there? I think so. Onto ten point one six, and this is the Sasquatch Festival request for one thousand, thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-five in RTMP and TRT funds. And. Uh. There is a request for bus service, so we would have to probably make a motion to. Speak to that. Um, James, anything more on this? Before we go?
No, I just, um, just a reminder that. There. They obviously right now, three thousand dollars for park. For park fees.
That's right.
They, they are on the hook for three thousand dollars in park fee rentals. It's like progress on the hook for seven thousand seven hundred.
Oh, got it, yeah. All right, is there motions to be made here?
I will move to award. Um. I don't know if I should do it separate or did, I'm gonna do it separate, um. Seven thousand five hundred dollars in TRT funds, we. On, by reimbursement. And three thousand dollars. Of a fee waiver to be used. From the TRT funds. For the park.
I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that motion was gonna be a little bit longer. To include, um.
She doesn't need buses anymore, does she? Okay.
But you could just say no bus, because it says in the. Agenda bill, you can say no bus, you can just leave it off altogether.
I'll just. I'm sorry, I'm gonna start over then. I'll go with, uh. No, I'm sorry, I'll keep it the same way it is and add. Twenty-five hundred dollars in RTMP funds.
Okay, uh, Councillor Coker, are you still okay with that motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Discussion, questions?
I'm so sorry to do this to you, Don. What?
I think. So you had seventy-five hundred dollars out of TRT. To be re, by reimbursement. Three thousand dollars in park fee waivers.
Reimbursed from TRT.
Reimbursed from TRT, thank you for clarifying, and twenty-five hundred dollars out of RTMP.
Correct, okay. And the reason why I did that was because I thought, well, if she doesn't need bus service, then I remember she has a huge event with lots of. Expenses, and so, um. If we're not gonna be able to give her some bus service, I wanted to make up for that with some more funds from RTMP. That's what I put that.
I just want to remind council that so far, naturally, this allocation, so far, we have allocated twenty thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to the TRT fund. We only have. Twenty-five thousand. To thirty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-two. We don't have exactly. Uh, so, um. By putting another ten thousand five hundred dollars out of TRT.
Excuse me, James. I have fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty from TRT today.
Um, I think you forgot, I think you forgot, block grants, six thousand dollars for block grants.
That's our next is for you.
Get this out of this month. Of our TRT funds, setting that aside. That was, that council voted on to these.
Mm-hmm. He's right.
Uh, well, so. My thought on that would be, we still, we receive TRT money every quarter. And, uh, so we still have third program the year that we're in coming. We've got fourth quarter coming, and. We've got all of next year's money coming, that six thousand dollars needs to be set aside out of. It'll come out of the next fiscal year, right? When we redo it, it'll be part of that money, that budget, then. I get what you're saying now. I know, but I'm still worried, because it sounds like, well, it. See, I wondered how this was gonna work out if we didn't have a, like a. A starting point and tick it off. Oh, you're keeping.
I am too.
I just didn't have the six thousand written down. I just had today's.
Can we move? Because it's an event, couldn't we move all of this over here and just do it as a full RTMP, because RTMP is already done by reimbursements anyways? How much? And then only do the park fee waivers out of TRT?
We're, we are, we have currently allocated nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars in RTMP fund.
Okay, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Sorry, completely start over. I would like to award. Ten thousand dollars in RTMP funds. And three thousand dollars fee waiver. As a transfer from the. TRT to the park.
I'll second.
Okay, and that motion made by Councillor Kenyon, seconded by Councillor Coker. Any discussion?
Um, Don, I am just looking at the TOT, and with that, with James's numbers, plus that will be at twenty-three thousand three hundred and fifty. Out of the twenty-five thousand. For TRT, and then we have only done ninety-eight fifty for RTMP. Um. Are we able to transfer fee waivers? From the tier, or the RTMP as well? I'm just curious, because we have a huge knock coming out of TRT, and like. I mean, a third, essentially, a little bit less than a third. Of RTMP money that drove me come out. That's why I was just wondering about the balancing. Act that we're trying to do here. I'm just concerned about the fee waivers part coming out of. The TRT. That's the only part of the motion that I was a little concerned about, just because it would put us at the twenty-three thousand dollar mark.
Okay, I did it, but I want to just ask a clarifying question. The money that we discussed that we think we might have right now. Doesn't, does or does not include what we anticipate coming into the remainder of this year?
It does not include that. You're correct, we will have our money coming in, we just, we never know the exact.
Um, Colin, could you give us an estimate about what we give in per quarter from? TRT?
I have the quarter, but, uh. I don't have. Not have a just, no.
When does it come in?
I don't know.
Four weeks?
TRT's quarterly, RTMP's annual.
I remember on, uh. The sheet that we received, uh, a month or so ago that we had. A couple months ago, maybe it was, we had received already fifteen thousand five hundred, which I'm assuming is a half a year, the first two payments. That was what we'd received, not what we started to fund with.
Okay.
I mean, I think.
I, I just want to make a comment on the RTMP fund side. Uh, so we firstly allocated nine thousand. If we allocate an additional ten thousand, that would put us at nineteen thousand and fifty. If our. Finance report is correct. Then we are over the budget, because in finance report, says we only have eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty. I think we have more. There's ten thousand dollars that. In, in a couple of months. Somehow left the RTMP fund. Um. So I think we have more than eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine, because again, we just received thirty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-nine. In, uh, November or September.
January, I think. Thirty-one thousand came in after the first of the year. It's on like January, February, so.
Well, then, then even more recent to believe that it's more than eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine, which is what. They don't shine up. There, there's strengths just like out of it, um.
Okay. Um, so are you trying to say you don't think we should award more than eighteen thousand?
I'm, I'm. I'm just, I'm just doing my duty to tell you what's.
Yep.
No, not knowing the balance is kind of like trying to land an airplane without runway, right, so. Anyway.
So I'm sorry, what was the running total before I made any motions on this?
Nine thousand.
So RTMP, yeah. And twenty thousand three hundred and fifty, including the six thousand for next fiscal year for TOT.
Okay, so I would, I would like to withdraw my motion. Start again, the, um. I'm just gonna go with a random number of nine thousand dollars. Of RTMP. And we'll put this right at eighteen, right? Okay, nine thousand dollars in RTMP funds. And will, with the, uh. Do you have to go over if I said three thousand?
No.
Okay, and a three thousand dollar. Fee waiver. To be transferred from the Parks Fund out of TRT.
I'll say that again.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
You, you said transferred.
Reimbursed.
Transferred out of the park funds.
Oh.
Oh, I'll clean it up when we, when the final motion.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, uh, the motion was made by Councillor Kenyon, seconded by Councillor Coker, and the motion is to grant. The Sasquatch Festival. Nine thousand dollars in RTMP funds, three thousand dollar fee waiver to be reimbursed by TRT funds. Good? All right, Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchin.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Councillor Hollitt.
Hi.
Motion passes. Any other motions to be made here on this one? Okay, move it, yeah.
Oh, on that, on.
Yes, any additional motions, no, okay. Uh, on to ten point one seven, and that's the feast request to use six hours of the city's free bus services. James, anything more?
I don't know, I was just gonna remind, uh, council that again, they said, well, this is our speed thing, so if no one are speed, it's the services. Or they will need two hours or something, they will. Give it back.
Okay. Um, is there a motion? Okay.
And I don't have it in front of me, so, uh, I move to award feast. Six hours of LTE time. Bus funds.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Councillor Brewer, seconded by Councillor Tarman. Is there questions, discussion? Thoughts? Nothing heard, so the motion is, uh, to. Award the feast organization six hours of free LTD bus time. Um. You okay with that? All right. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchin.
Hi.
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Councillor Hollitt.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. James, just as a follow-up, if you could figure out the fiscal year for LTD and what's remaining, yes, I think pretty easy to know what's remaining, but, yeah. All right. Moving on to item six, which is public comment. Anyone on the Zoom platform have a comment? Anyone on the? Anyone in the room have a public comment?
You guys did it.
Good comment, good comment. Alright, nothing heard. Motion to adjourn? So, wait a minute, we have one public comment. Yeah.
That great asking for fee waivers for the park, so is that fifteen hundred dollars to go to the park? I, I'm just.
The motion was to award fifteen hundred from RTMP, right? Right, so you can choose that, how you want to spend that, it's how I ended that.
For the RTMP fund.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, are you here a motion to adjourn?
I still move.
Need adjourned at eight twenty PM. Living an hour behind.